Alright, so it says you are live on YouTube.
Thank you, Kristi. So, welcome to everyone. Any of the public who are watching. Welcome to our staff and all of council. And this is our regular meeting of council. It's been livestreamed electronically. And the date is that January the 18th. So, welcome to everyone. And now that the meeting is open, we will have a moment of silence, please. Thank you, everyone. Before we adopt the agenda, we do have an addendum to the meeting. And it was dated today. Oh, it's for, sorry, for today's meeting. And it's regarding eight correspondence action item B, 8B. And this addendum is coming in from the Recreation Committee Chair Brandy Atwell. And it is regarding a time change, and I'm just going to read it to everyone. If you haven't seen it, it was dated today to all members of Montague Council from the Montague Recreation and Culture Committee. And the, it's regarding to facilitate better attendance at our monthly committee meetings. We would like to request a change in our terms of reference to adjust the time of our meetings to 7:00 PM for future meetings. Thank you for considering this. Brandy Drew Atwell, the Chair of the MRCC. So, we're going to be voting for, on that in a minute. But that's the addendum to the meeting. And we have no any items to move forward. And so, we do, I think then before we adopt the minutes, we do have a motion then that was moved by Ian Straight and seconded by Claus Vandermeer that council accept the following addendum. So, this is just to accept the addendum to the meeting from the Recreation Committee time change request. All, anybody to speak to it first? If not, all in favor? That is carried. Thank you, everyone. Now, we have a motion moved by Karen Jennings and seconded by Jeff Carroll that the regular meeting of council agenda dated January the 18th, 2022 be approved as amended. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. And we have a motion moved by Claus Vandermeer and seconded by Ian Straight that the minutes of the regular meeting of council of December the 21st, 2021 be approved as circulated. All in favor? Those are carried. Thank you. Any business arising from those minutes? Seeing none, moving on. The first, the first, well, I should have said, we have no delegations and deputations tonight. So, the first report of our municipal officer is going to be yours, Jasmine. And it is the 3A on the interim planning services. So, I'll give the screen over to you, Jasmine. Thank you.
Thank you, Reeve Dobson. This report has been prepared. Right now, we do not have a planner. Our contract planner is contract finished on December 31st. So, I have put, and unfortunately, the first round of hiring for the planner position was unsuccessful. Unfortunately, the existing staff at the township does not have the time or expertise to manage the influx of inquiries and applications. So, we do need some coverage on a temporary basis. We, I put together three options for council to consider. So, two are through a company. So, it's either JP2G or WSP. And the final would be an individual who is employed by the County of Lanark. Mary Kirkham, who did do some interim work with the township in the summer of last year. I do recommend that we appoint Mary Kirkham as planner as she has background and knowledge of what's going on with the township. And the hourly rate would be under the current, the other offerings.
Thank you. Any questions on this? Yes, Karen?
So, with the contract with Mary is an individual contract? It's not through the county like it was before?
Oh, yeah, it's an individual contract.
Okay, see, Jess?
It's great that we're able to find somebody for that. That's great. But I remember we had Mary before, there was a timing problem where she couldn't commit the time to it. So, is there, do we have like sort of an allotment of time that she's able to, or she's able to keep up with all the work that we have going on?
Yes, we did go over kind of time constraints. So, we're talking probably a max of, you know, eight hours a week, which when I got from our current contractor, which is about how much he would allocate.
Okay, thank you.
And this, and this, to be clear, this is just to ensure that the township is processing the applications that we have rather than like doing larger scale projects, so.
100%, yeah, this is just the tread water to keep, to keep going. Until we, until we find our permanent solution, so.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, okay. And she can commit to that, I guess, too, right? That's the.
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, and to be clear, there's, there's no real timeline in place right now.
No.
Okay, and Karen?
Just to follow up then. So, if we don't have our contract with Smith Falls, is our former planner still acting on our behalf on any of the outstanding matters that they were doing? Or does the current person we're going to go with our contract on take it over?
Um, as of now, the current planner is assisting by providing information about anything that had been going on before he left. But in terms of actually acting on our behalf, no.
Follow up? So, anything that we still had ongoing, it's now back to us and then if Mary is the chosen one, then Mary will pick it up? Is that how it's going to work?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no further questions, I do have a motion moved by, sorry, Ian? Sorry, Ian?
Yeah, thank you, Reeve. I guess one of my questions, Ms. Ralph, is does, does Ms. Kirkham have, is there going to be a set day when she's going to be available? Like, if people have questions, is there a time that they can call? Is she's actually going to be in the office or available, or how's that, how does that work?
We didn't have this specific conversation of a set day, but we certainly can do that.
They might be a little easier for the, for the public to have questions and know which day she's in the office so that they can reach out if they have any referrals or questions or, you know?
That does make sense to have a specific set of hours on a specific day. Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, seeing no further questions, I have a motion moved by Jeff Carroll, seconded by Karen Jennings, that the council receive the interim planning services report and that the following be approved. The council appoint Mary Kirkham as planner for the township immediately on a temporary basis. All in favor? It's carried. Thank you for that first report, Jasmine, and the next one is also yours. And that's on the Pinery Hunt Club Road.
Thank you, Reeve Dobson. So, back in the spring of 2021, staff received a letter related to the closure of Pinery Hunt Club Road. I'm using the term road, however, it's not really in a technical sense a road in that there seems to be no background that the township has ever actually done maintenance or has never been adopted by the township. It's kind of a trail that certain people seem to use. So, our township solicitor has been representing Montague related to the closure through the Road Access Act, which is a very complex and rare piece of legislation that I will admit I'm not overly familiar with. Our solicitors have noted that they don't believe that this, this application will affect access to any lands around this, the applicant's land. And they do recommend that we indicate that we have no objection to the commonly known Pinery Hunt Club Road. So, it's a little different. It's outside of our policies because it's really not a road the way we would define it under the municipal act.
Okay, I see Karen first and then Ian.
So, it is a property, though, that we have to address. So, it's not an untamed road allowance. It's, it's something that we've had that we have to close. And yet, so if we do this, we don't impact any of the other properties around it, you're saying?
Yeah. Make sure I'm unmuted here. Yes, we, our solicitor has done a title search and they, they're confident in saying that we're not impacting access to other properties.
Because.
Follow up?
Yeah, just before you, I go back to Karen to go along with your comment or your answer also, Jasmine. So, does, are you saying that, so have the bordering landowners been, been notified yet? Or, or are you saying they're going to be notified?
The surrounding owners, under the Road Access Act, policy, I didn't say policies, but under the legislation, the person who is seeking to close this road are required to notify the, the area owners. So, they've, the court proceedings requires notification. So, we have not, the person who has, is doing this application has.
Has, has that, do you know if that's been done?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Okay, Karen?
Because a follow up that I had was the length of this road. Because I understand it goes right back Cuckoo's Nest Road, like, straight through, like, it's quite long. That's why I was concerned about any properties around it.
Okay, Ian and then to Claus.
So, Ms. Ralph, I guess my question is, if the, if the applicant actually owns the road, they, they own the property, why do they have to get permission from us to close it if it's not a, is it kind of some unmaintained road? Or is it a forced road or?
The simple answer is no, it's not a forced road or an unmaintained road. It's not really a road in terms of the definition of a road under the municipal act. It might meet the definition of a road under the Road Access Act, which is why they're going through this court process. So, they're not really looking for permission in terms of closing the road. What they're asking us is to file a no objection. If we were to say object to the closure of this road, I'm going to call it a road. If we were to object, then we would ask our solicitor to represent us in the process of objecting to the closure. But we wouldn't necessarily be, we can't say no necessarily.
So, I, I follow up to that, Reeve?
Yes, yes.
I, I guess my question is, is this road, as Counselor Jennings already has referenced, I do believe it runs right to Beckwith. It is, it is quite, quite a long chunk of road or what, I don't know, trail, whatever you want to call it. Anyways, I'm just wondering, like, is there a benefit to the township of leaving it open for future development? You know, that could happen potentially 20 years down the road? Does this, does this affect the, the ability to, to put a road through there or do anything else of that nature? Or, you know? That's, that's my question.
Yeah, so we don't actually retain ownership of this road. It's not owned by us.
Okay.
So, in order to, if we were to say pursue that, we'd have to actually go through the whole purchase process of purchasing all of those portions of land from the owner if he was willing to do that.
All right, I just want to make sure that was all. I don't want to shut any doors that can't be reopened potentially. And, yeah, I've been down that road a zillion times, so. It used to be referred to actually as the old bell line.
Yep.
Okay, Claus?
Thanks, Reeve. Jasmine, so this road, it connects from one road to another?
Um, it kind of, it connects, um, it kind of meanders off of Pinery and goes up to Beckwith.
It was up the Beckwith. So, was it developed as a so-called road for a purpose of a subdivision of some sort at one time or?
No, it appears, so the township has never done any maintenance on the road that we can tell, nor has it been adopted into our road system, which are the two kind of tests that would make it a municipal road. I, I believe it was, it was a trail. It might have been, you know, a historical road.
Yeah, like an old logging road of some sort.
Okay, Ian?
Yeah, so just back in the day when I was, when I was much shorter than I am right now, we actually used to own the property that butted up to it. So, that, that piece of property, that was all cut out for the bell line that used to run across through there to provide access for the, for the phone service. So, and that's how it got opened up, so that people used to be able to drive their truck down there. When you went out into the Beckwith, there was a creepy quarry at the back there. You go to the Cuckoo's Nest Eagle for a swim you wanted to. Back in many, many moons ago.
So, I, I have, I have a bit of a concern, but maybe somebody can help me on this. Because generally speaking, over the years that I've been sitting around the table, my experience is that we shouldn't close roads. And and I guess usually I use the, the reasoning behind what you've just mentioned a few minutes ago, Ian. And that is that, like, we're talking about making a decision today, but we, we have to always be looking ahead, whether it be 20 or even 50 years from now. And we know what's happening with the growth from Ottawa out to Beckwith. And if we think about it, there's still going to be much growth from Beckwith into Montague that hasn't been developed yet. And so, my big concern right now is that we own a park, what we call parkland. Montague owns it. The taxpayers of Montague owns this park. And now, there's quite a considerable amount of acreage. I've walked on some of this acreage. And a lot of it is swamp because it's part of the Mud Lake. And so, the problem is that some of the land is swamp, but some of it is very good land. And I always wondered that, again, thinking 20, 50 years from now, if you come in off of Cuckoo's Nest Road, you come into Montague, and could there ever be a subdivision built in there? And so, like, for me, I'm afraid to make a decision or even vote in favor of this. And the reason is because I don't know enough about the, I don't know enough about the detail yet. Like, we're being told that it's, like, it's, is it, it, it's either a road or it's not a road. Is it an access road? Is it not? Why are we calling it a road if it's completely owned by somebody else? It, it, does it, does it go, does it, does it go straight or touch our property? Like, our, our park that we, that we own? There's no development in this, on this parkland yet, but there could be. We could use it, we could use it for recreational purposes. We could use it for trails. We could use it for many things in the future. And I've mentioned this before at county or at some of our meetings. But I guess those are some of my concerns, Jasmine. So, can you answer any of those at all? I hate to put you on the spot or Steve if he was with us here, but my big concern, does this road or whatever you want to call it touch our land?
Um, so I, I don't know if it touches our land. I think the main thing to remember is that, again, this is not owned by us. This is not property that we're closing and vending. This is property that is essentially privately owned. So, if the township did have interest in building a road out there, we would have to basically go to, essentially the same process you would building any other road and buying all of the pieces of property. And of course, like, because this trail has developed relatively organically from utility easements, it's not necessarily maybe the best way to place or way to build a road either. So, I'm not sure that I can confidently say that it's, you know, going to hinder. I, I, I think I, I think I've answered as much as I can of your question.
So, because I still, so if, if what you're saying is true, I'm, I'm still not understanding myself. Why, why would we even have to talk about it? But we can come back there. I want to, I missed you, Claus, and I apologize. I talked before you there. I apologize. I didn't see your, your hand the first time. So, Claus, I'll go to you first and hopefully we'll get straight there.
Yes, I'm a little concerned on what you were saying, Jasmine, that we really don't own it. It's the property owners that own this so-called trail. So, if they want to close it off, there's not much we can do about it, is there?
Like I said, we would have to ask our solicitor to represent us in court in the hearing that's taking place. Unfortunately, it is taking place in February. So, we can file an objection if we had a strong objection. As of now, our solicitors recommended that we don't oppose the closure. But it ultimately could happen where we could oppose and it would still be closed anyway.
True.
I still don't understand, like, if it's not our road, it's not our property, then why do we have the right to oppose it? Why do we have to indicate no objection to the closure? If we've got nothing to do with it?
I believe we are consulted as part of the requirements of the legislation.
If that was the only, the only reason, then I can understand it, but but I'm not 100% sure there. And especially again, like, like, we, we would have some stake in this possibly if, if it accessed our property. Because I remember in the earlier days, there was discussion of of a trail being built north off of Pinery Road, which was going to line up to Cuckoo's Nest Road. There was some discussion with that. So, yes, Ian?
So, so Reeve, what you're talking about is Row Road, right? That comes off of the, off the, off the Pinery Road, just off, just past Holbrook on the left-hand side, which actually runs out to Born Road, which, if you look on it, look at it on the map, this trail or whatever it is runs at the end of Born Road.
Yeah, which is our property.
Exactly. This here piece, this trail actually runs out to Born Road as well. And it doesn't look like, you know, on the map. I don't know where the 100 acres is that we own, but as, as far as the crow flies, I don't know how far away it is. It could, it could actually be a little closer than you think it might be. It'd be interesting to see it on the map, to be, to see the inlet with our, with our 100-acre parcel that's there and what, what this here may or may not look like.
Do, do we, do we have any chance to, to defer this decision and still look at it once before that court case?
Give me one second.
I'm pretty sure that the last time we decided now, it was different circumstances, but the last time that we closed the road, we wish we hadn't have later.
Yeah, so I want to be clear, we're not actually closing a road.
Well, if you look at the resolution, we're, we're talking about objecting to closing a road.
But it may be closed with or without our actions.
Okay, so I'll come back to Jasmine if you're looking up something there, but I'm going to go to Karen first.
So, we have documentation from the solicitor of the individual stating that they have served the owners of each parcel of land by the road so that it's to be closed and, and they've had their 90 days notice as the act is stating?
Yes.
So, did, if we have landed, we get our notification?
Um, well, we did receive a notification. That's the letter that we've received here.
That's our formal notice for us to decide about the closing of the road?
Yes. I'm just looking up to see if I can find when the actual date of the court, court date is. All I have is February, February.
Okay, and I'll go to you, Ian, please?
Yeah, Jasmine, do we get the notice, you know, because, because we're the township? Or because it butts up to our property potentially?
Um, my understa, okay, so the hearing is on February 4th.
Because, crack me if I'm wrong, Reeve, but does our, does the 100 acres not, is it not in and around Mud Lake?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
Which is, which is very close to where that, that trail runs. That trail runs on the back end of it.
That, that's exactly why I'm, why I have the concern.
So, I just want to be clear that, like, we don't own this property. So, there's no mechanism for which we could open this road unless we buy all of the property from the individual.
Claus?
Uh, how much property would be involved in that, Jasmine? I presume an awful lot because it's a pretty long road.
Yes. I, I wouldn't be able to tell you offhand, but it would be, you know, it's a lot of property, yes.
That could get very expensive.
Actually, there's not that much.
Yes, Ian?
I mean, if you look on Pinery Road from the first big corner over to the, the back of Born Road, it, I don't think it's as long as what Row, Row Road is. It goes off of, off the back end of Holbrook to get over to Beckwith. It'd be interesting to see where the Beckwith boundary line is there.
Well, it's, it's, it's right there. It's, I've, I've walked, I've driven in Cuckoo's Nest Road and I got out of my car and I started walking on that trail that we're talking about. There's a bit of a corrugated pass over some of the swamp and you, if you wanted to, you just kept going, you could walk straight through. It's a bit rough, but you can get through to Pinery Road. But, but you're right, Claus. You know, land costs a lot of money, but it, but if it's, if it's our only access to the park that we own, I'm just saying if, because I don't have all the details, but if it's the only access to our property that we do own, then, then there's a, then I have a concern. Because otherwise, the only way you can get to our property then is through Beckwith. You have to come through Beckwith. And that's not exactly the best scenario either. And yes, it costs money, but 50 years from now, there also can be a lot of money made in a subdivision in, on that land of ours that we own. Because I've also walked on some of it and it's also very, it's pretty nice land. Yes, Claus?
Uh, thanks, Reeve. Jasmine, do we have to make a decision tonight on this or do we still have some time to?
Yeah, Jasmine was just looking at the date there.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No.
Um, the final date, the court date is on the 4th. So, you could make a final decision on the 1st. So um, you could make a final decision on first.
That's our next council meeting.
Well, we can do that, or we can call a special meeting. It can be a special meeting if we had to.
Could we, sorry to follow up, Reeve, if I could? If we, thanks, we could have a special meeting. Could we then maybe have uh, a chance to look at some of the maps and topographical areas to get a real good idea where this is and how close it is to our properties and?
I can provide a map, yes, of of the, the detail um, of how it accesses our property. Um, I can also provide some information about some of more of the legal background of what it means, what the application means under the Road Access Act.
Okay, thank you.
Ian?
Yeah, thank you, Reeve, and um, I I guess, can we add it to Thursday night's meeting? Is there enough time to be able to do that, to see map overlay?
Um.
Is that possible or no?
We've technically missed the deadline for the release of the agenda. Um, we could do an addendum, but I think it might be beneficial for council to receive some more background on what, what this road legally is and what is a, what is a Road Access Act application, um, which I can have, um, and what it would mean to actually object to this closure.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, so um, do we um, so we either go ahead and, well, I I have a motion here that we have to vote on anyways, unless we want to make um, a friendly amendment to this motion or whether we want to make a new motion to defer this, or if we defeat this, then we defer it. So what's the process here, Jasmine? Sorry, Claus, you go ahead.
I would recommend that um, the motion either be amended or deferred. Um, and then I can provide a um, kind of synopsis of discussed information and what will be brought, be brought back to council.
Well, my my opinion would be simply just to, if we vote on this, it would be simpler to defer it. I think that would be the simplest, but uh, Claus, I'll, yes, Claus?
Yes, thanks, Reeve. Uh, based on Jasmine's information, I would recommend that we defer it. So if we need a motion on the floor to do that, I would do so.
Okay, is that okay, Jasmine, there? We get a second and vote on the deferral?
Yep.
Okay, so seconded by Ian. Uh, all in favor of deferring this? Okay, that's carried, thank you. So I'll have to sign that one, Jasmine, later. And do we need to vote on this one now?
No.
Okay.
Um, I do want to just uh, get some counsel, sorry, sorry, Reeve Dobson, my apologies. Uh, just to get uh, um, consensus from everybody that I'm bringing forward mapping of the trail along with um, some legal information about what an objective, what an objection under the Road Access Act would actually look like.
I think we have, I think we do have the consensus there, but first I'll, before we do, I'll, I'll, I'll go to Ian. I think you have your hand up there, Reeve.
Yeah, Ms. Ralph, can you, you, you mentioned ma- uh, mapping of the trail. We also have the uh, hundred acres that we own, the parcel on there mapped as well. And whether it has access from Row Road or not, that plays a part in the whole thing as well. Thank you.
No problem.
But I I, I I actually wouldn't mind actually knowing though, um, specifically, like specifically why this even came to us. You, you did say why, but I'm not really a hundred percent clear. Because like, if if we have nothing to do with it, then why did it even have to come to our, our discussion? I'm glad it did come, but I'm just wondering why. Uh, it like, was, is there some connection that we don't know about? So I'm going to go around and get that consensus for you, uh, Jasmine. Uh, I'll go around the table here, Ian, please.
Before you, before you start, so I just want to, again, I'm just going to do a quick synopsis, so everybody knows what you're agreeing to. Um, so I'm bringing forward mapping of the trail with relation to township-owned hundred acres, including uh, Row Road, bringing legal information related to what an objection to the Road Access Act would look like and generally the Road Access Act process, including notification.
Yes, and um, I I'm not saying that it was a hundred acres. It could have been ma- more than a hundred acres or less, so I'm not exactly sure how many acres there are, but we, we did at least one time call it our parkland. I don't know the number of acres, that's all.
I think it is around a hundred acres. It might be a hundred and fifty.
Okay, and the, just, just so for information, this was something that Montague acquired possibly back in the nineteen fifties uh, from um, some back taxes or something, so it it's something that happened a long, long time ago. Okay, going around the table for consensus, Ian? Uh, Karen?
Yes.
Jeff? And Claus?
Yes.
Okay, you've got it, Jasmine? Okay, thank you for this. Uh, then we're going to move, move on uh, to the next uh, one, uh, the next issue there. And that's um, C three C on the manager of planning job description.
Uh, thank you, Reeve Dobson. Um, sorry, just got to switch gears here. Um, so we did post for a manager of planning uh, position uh, in twenty two, twenty one. Unfortunately, the search was unsuccessful. Um, in discussions with um, the previous planner with the township, along with um, a few other um, discussions, I am making the recommendation that the job description be modified to read planner rather than manager of planning. Um, the position that um, you guys have put together is really a planner actually kind of captures what you're asking that individual to do. And in the absence of actually managing employees, um, m- manager of planning might be a, um, you know, a touch of a, a misnomer. Uh, it also, if we are moving forward with the shared services agreement with the town of Smith Falls, um, the term planner actually fits much better with the town of this Smiths Falls structure, where the position would be reporting to the senior planner within the town. Um, so it's a very minor change. There's no change to the actual job duties and responsibilities. Um, because generally planner fits what you're asking the individual to do quite well. Um, and I think it'll provide greater clarity for people who may be applying to the position.
Thank you, Jasmine. Uh, I have uh, two people, Karen and then Claus.
So if I remember correctly, the last one though, had staff reporting to the position where this one does not. How does that impact the scoring then for salary?
I'm not sure what staff would have report to um, the planner.
I thought the
the manager of planning.
I I thought that the CBO was one of the ones that reported to the planner, the manager of planning in the last one.
No, I haven't. I didn't modify anything else within the position description except for the title.
Okay.
I think it's, then, and Claus?
Uh, thanks, Reeve. So Jasmine, this person would report to the man- planning manager in Smith Falls or? Uh, correct?
Um, if um, within the context of the potential shared services agreement, they would report to uh, the title of the individual, the senior planner.
Of Smith Falls?
Yes.
Okay, would they report to anybody within our organization?
They'd report to the clerk administrator.
Right, okay, just want to clarify that. Thank you.
Uh, Ian?
Yeah, thank you very much, Reeve. Um, Ms. Ralph, do we have any, any scope of work or, or anything of that nature in regards to what the work duties are for the town of Smith Falls? Or our commitment or anything else like that? Is it a strict fifty fifty? Is there a rate of pay that we're charging to the falls?
Um, I don't know what had been previously discussed with council, because I know this has been discussed before. Um, so if you don't have that information, we could certainly bring it in a, in a com- upcoming meeting. So my apologies on that.
I, maybe if I'm wrong, maybe I missed an email or something, but I have not seen anything about any contract with the town of Smith Falls. Um, actually, the only reason why, the only way I was informed of it was because Counselor Jennings sat on the hiring committee. Um, so I haven't, I haven't saw nothing.
Okay, my apologies then. I'll make it a priority for the next meeting to make sure that that, those details get uh, um, in front of council.
Until I sat on the committee, I had no idea either, which is why I had questioned the composition of the hiring committee.
Okay. Great, thank you, everybody, for this. See no further questions. I have a motion moved by Jeff Carroll, seconded by K- Claus Vandemere, that the council received the following report, that's the amending planner position job description and that the following be rec- be approved, that council adopt the amended job description for the planner. All in favor? Okay, that's carried. Jasmine for that one, and um, next is three D. Yours also, uh, that's on the public works manager lead hand vacancy, and I think that uh, we also have uh, Stephen to speak to us about that. So I'll give it over to you, Care, uh, be either Jasmine or Stephen.
Uh, thank you very much. I think maybe I'll take the lead and Steve, you can follow up if that's okay with you. Unless you want to take the lead. No, alright. So um, we uh, do have a vacancy in the public works department. So our lead hand uh, will be leaving us as of uh, February. So our personnel policy does allow a vacancy to be filled by an internal um, internal competition. And um, the public works manager and I have discussed, and we feel that there's enough expertise um, in the individuals who are internal, um, to hold an internal um, competition. And uh, so we're just letting council know, and we are also letting council know that uh, we feel confident to uh, post the operator position after the receipt of this report um, so that we can reduce the amount of time that there's a vacancy uh, within public works in this absolutely important season. It's difficult to have a vacancy in, in the middle of winter.
Okay, Ian? Uh, before I go to you, Ian, I'm sorry. Uh, before I go to you, Ian, I'll just uh, say, uh, go to Steve if there's anything that you do want to add first before we have our discussion.
Oh, nothing to add from, from me, I think. Jasmine summed up everything there.
Okay, Ian, please?
Yeah, thank you very much, Reeve, and and thank you very much, uh, Mr. Ralph and Ms. Ralph. The, I'm very glad to hear that we're uh, we're, we're going down this route and that we're uh, looking at promoting people internally. It's always nice to see that people are, are developing and are going within the, within the uh, within the, the works department and that we have the skills and ability to, to carry on. It's always, it's always a uplifting thing for the, for the guys as well, to know that uh, uh, you know, you have confidence in them and that they have an opportunity. Um, I also want to take a second to thank uh, Steve as well. I saw an email that jotted out there that uh, I heard you were the plow guy for uh, for a uh, for a little bit. So uh, thank you very much for your uh, above and beyond efforts. Um, and I'm sure the constituents that uh, you plowed out are very thankful as well. So thanks a lot for doing that.
He probably enjoyed himself a lot. Thanks, Ian. Okay, uh, we have a motion. It was moved by Karen Jennings and seconded by Ian Straight. The council received the following report, uh, the public works manager lead hand vacancy and that the following be approved, that council received this report for information. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. I'm going to move on then to the reports of the committees, and I have a motion moved by Ian Straight, seconded by Claus Vandemere, that the council approved the minutes of the meeting of county committee, the whole meeting of December the twenty first, twenty twenty two, and approve the recommendations contained within. All in favor? That's carried. Do we have any business arising from those minutes? Seeing none, we're moving on. Uh, but we have no petitions tonight, and uh, we have some bylaws, which I'm going to read. Uh, the first one was moved by Karen Jennings, seconded by Claus Vandemere, that bylaw, sorry, the bylaw thirty eight seventy seven, twenty twenty two, being a bylaw to establish the calculation and collection procedures to be im- to be implemented for the interim tax billing process. Be read a first, second and third time and passed, signed and sealed this eighteenth day of January twenty twenty two. All in favor? First bylaws carried. Next moved by Ian Straight, seconded by Jeff Carroll, that bylaw thirty eight seventy eight, twenty twenty one, being a bylaw to authorize the borrowing of money to meet current expenditures for the year. Be read a first, second and third time and pass, signed and sealed this eighteenth day of January twenty twenty two. All in favor? That's carried. You, next one moved by Karen Jennings, seconded by Claus Vandemere, that bylaw thirty eight seventy nine, twenty twenty one. Yes, Jasmine? Oh, uh, you're um,
Yeah, I got it. I do want to make a note that this is just a ru- uh, routine um, uh, procedural issue. We just made a mistake on the recital of the individual to sign the documents, so it's just fixing a, a slight error.
Okay, and Ian?
Yes, sorry, Reeve, I think the, are the bylaws right, that are, the last one, I think I heard as well, thirty seventy twenty twenty one versus thirty seventy twenty twenty two. Is that correct?
The last one was thirty eight seventy eight, twenty twenty one?
Oh, so it is, it's supposed to be twenty twenty two.
Yeah.
I kind of, I kind of lost a year in my life, so.
The Reeve, I think the, the next one you just read, read as well, was it twenty twenty one?
Oh, yes, okay, so uh, yeah, thanks. Okay, and I will change this one also. Thank you, Ian, uh, that bylaw thirty eight seventy nine, twenty twenty two, being a bylaw to amend bylaw thirty eight fifty eight, twenty twenty one. I bylaw to stop up and close a portion of the Rosedale subdivision. Be read a first, second and third time and pass, signed and sealed this eighteenth day of January twenty twenty two. All in favor? Uh, did you have a question first, Claus?
Yeah, sorry, Reeve, I was, I missed to mention to you that. Yes, I'm here.
Did you have, go ahead. Yeah, I was just asking, you had your hand up. I wanted, if you had a question before we voted on this bylaw.
I don't have a question. I was to make a statement and I should have done it at the beginning of the meeting, so I apologize. But I would declare a conflict of interest on voting on this one.
Okay, thank you. Uh, thank you then, and then all in favor, everyone?
Uh, just a moment, um, um, uh, Deputy Reeve Vandemere, you do need to turn your camera off if you're declaring an interest.
Hello? Okay, all, all in favor? That's carried. Thank you. And we can get Claus back then?
Yep.
Uh, yes, uh, yes, Ian?
Yeah, I remember, I I do apologize to yourself and council. I did have a motion that I would like to, uh, talk about, uh, or brought forward, I guess, um, when I, I should have brought it up at the beginning of the meeting, if that's, that's possible.
So did you say on what, on what road?
Uh, no, a motion. Notice a motion.
Oh, I noticed a motion, okay, so when we come to the notice motions, I'll go back to you and then we can get consensus, okay?
Yes, thank you very much, Reeve.
Okay, so our next uh, motion, our next bylaw is moved by Ian Straight and seconded by Claus by Karen Jennings, that council authorized the recreation committee meeting time change to seven P M. This is regarding the addendum that we dealt with at the beginning of the meeting. Uh, all in favor? And that is carried. So I believe if someone then could let Brandy know, uh, I'm not sure, when is, when is the next rec- the next rec- meeting is coming up very soon, right, Ian and Jeff? Wh- when is it?
Next, next week.
So if somebody can let Brandy know right away, then maybe they can have their next meeting at seven o'clock. Okay, moving on, uh, now, uh, next, we have um, we've had all of the uh, bylaws, and we're, the next is the bylaws, and where the next is the mo- no, motion and notices of motion. And I guess, Ian, I think the proper way to do it is if you just want to sort of in a one liner, if you can, tell us what motion that you wanted to put on the table, and then we'll get, or first of all, we'll, we'll get consensus if we can do this. Is everybody in favor of Ian bringing forward a notice of motion, which he forgot to do at the beginning of the meeting? Is everybody in favor of that? I'll go around the table, Karen?
Yes.
The clause, I saw your hand up, Jeff. By itself, so we have consensus for that, Jasmine? And then I'm going to go back to you, Ian.
Yeah, first of all, I do apologize to council for not mentioning that at the start, I paid very much for that to happen. I guess what I, what I'd like to bring forward is a motion that maybe either at the next council meeting or the, or the council meeting following that, that we could have a review of the steps required to get a severance within the township. Over the, over the past two months, I had, had a significant number of people that have called me with concerns and a lot of questions regarding the steps and, and all the hoops and all the everything that everybody's having to jump through to get a severance within the township. And I think that for myself, they're asking questions that I, that I'm not a hundred percent sure of. And I would really like to understand what the process is from A to Z. Who has the authority at the end of the day? Is it the township? Is it the county? Is it Rio Valley Conservation Authority? What the roadblocks are and what the paperwork, paperwork really looks like? There seems to be a lot of confusion, and there's a lot of frustration as well.
Yeah, we can just maybe, if we can just, if you can just put that notice on the, we don't have to go into all the details, you know. If you can just put those of motion on the agenda and we can vote on it the next time, then I think, Ian?
All right, it's fine.
Jasmine?
So as a procedural, just to make sure that I'm noting this correctly in the minutes, I'm, I'm going to put on that councillor straight provided a notice of motion for, and I just, I want to make sure this is correct, to have staff bring forward information on the severance process, including, you know, how it works, the steps and all of that stuff. I'll clean it up for the minutes.
Does that suffice for you, Ian?
Yeah, thank you very much, Ms. Ralph, that would be, that would be great. I just, I just think, I really like to have some clarification on, on the, on the process myself, so that we can get this, you know, I don't want to hinder development within the, within the township.
Okay. Jeff, you again?
Thank you, and I, I agree with councillor straight for sure. My, I guess my questions are, because when we were, when we're going through for hiring the planner, a big part of that was to, to go through that process and to, and that was why we were hiring a planner too as well, is to make that process simpler, and they would help that with that. So I guess my couns- my question is, is, are, are, is for this motion, is it, is it for when? Is this going to be like an objective for our, when we hire the planner? Or what's, what staff would be able to do this? Is this something that our current clerk can do, or would we be able to task Mary Kirkham, or is this something that, anyways, that's why I guess I'm asking councillor straight as well, like, when, when, what would be the timeline, the timeframe, because I'm game for it, but I just, what was the timeframe for? Or Jasmine?
Yes, Jasmine?
Yeah, if, if councillor straight wants to answer, that, that's fine. I just kind of wanted to make a quick informational note. Is that Mary Kirkham may be optimally situated to provide guidance on how that process would work? It, it, it just as an information note.
Yes, Ian?
Yeah, thank you very much, and, and, and I appreciate that, Ms. Ralph, because that's, I really want to understand the process right now, where we're at. I'm hoping that the planner that comes in can, can simplify it, obviously, when, when councillors are getting phone calls, a bit of frustration, and people are two years trying to get a severance, and we go through the process, and I, I somebody telling me they need to have two and a half acres now, and there, there's a whole bunch of things that just seem to be happening. And people are investing massive amounts of money, I'm trying to get these severances done. I just think, I just don't have an understanding of who has the authority at the end of the day, is it, is it, is it the township or who it is? So if, if Ms. Kirkham comes on and she can, she can put something together, you know, relatively quickly, so that, that I think for myself, I'm sure the rest of council like to understand what the process is as well. That would be greatly appreciated.
Okay, thanks then, Jasmine and Ian for that. Moving on, we do have that notice of motion in for the next time. Moving on, we have no correspondence items to move forward. And no action items to move forward, and we have no unfinished business and other business, and before we go in camera.
Reeve Dobson?
Yes.
I did want to call, I did place the R V C A action plan in the action category, and I would encourage council to make sure that they're aware of, of the changes that are coming down for the conservation authority responsibilities. So there's going, they have a very detailed timeline in terms of how that's going to work within that document as well.
And, yeah, are you talking about septic systems and so on?
No, that's coming up in the next meeting.
Yeah, okay, I was hoping you weren't. Thanks. Okay, then, thanks. Then moving forward, before we do go into camera, do we have any questions from the public?
Hello, Reeve Dobson, it's Christie. I have no questions from the public.
Okay, and Jasmine, you don't? Okay, you're muted there, Jasmine?
I do not, and I do want to note that we should be going into recess prior to going in camera.
Yeah, sorry.
Yes.
That's my next motion.
Okay.
Okay, thanks then. So we do have a motion moved by Claus Vandemere, second by Karen Jennings. Excuse me, the council recess at six fifty seven. All in favor? And that is carried. Okay, so then the next motion that I have in my list here is, I think I would place maybe, but I'll just move it. I think that's the next one to move, move into closed session, right?
Yes, but we'll move on to committee of the whole prior to moving into closed session.
Okay, yep. So, okay, then we're going to, if we can just take a minute to change over everything, then we'll be back in maybe two minutes, okay? Thanks.
So we'll get started, the, this report is on garbage tags. There's been multiple reports over the past year on garbage tags, the existing situations going on. In this report, I think it's good to note that there, there is going to be no functional change with the recommendations by staff. All this is, is really, it's for increasing staff productivity and also for residents. It's a much more efficient system for residents. They're not required to come into the office, and it saves them time, especially if they're working away from home and they're not able to get in the office very much. So the first thing, we, we, this one was adopted in ninety five. There's been minor changes in nineteen ninety six. It originally did state that we had two bags, and then it went down to the ninety tags in ninety six, and that works out to one point seven, seven, three bags per week. Through the report, there's a couple of tables in there. SaaS broken down the two thousand twenty one disposal for the year end. It's broken down per house with a average weight of twenty four point five eight pounds per house, so that's well under our one bag limit. And the next thing is council with the couple freezes that they've done with the, the COVID situation going on, we allow a three bag limit. Once this year in two thousand twenty one in February, we actually saw a reduction in the amount of garbage and waste that was disposed of. It was fifteen tons less than the monthly average that we are seeing. Staff, when, when I threw the township and we, I did a couple of audits, just looking at the number of bags houses, houses we're putting out, we're seeing one to two. The odd house you'll see with more than, more than two, but there was a few in between. And then the other tables in here will kind of show how we compare to the other municipalities in our municipal waste group. The average tag comes in at two fifty six. SaaS recommended three, three dollars per tag, and that would just be for anything above and beyond the two bag limit, so any, any three bags and up, they'll need that. At this point, we'll look for consensus by council, if they're willing to move on to part, part two of this report on the options there.
So any questions so far, Ian?
Thanks, Steve, for the for the report. I guess, I have a few questions. We did three bags in, in twenty twenty one. When did that stop?
So that stopped at, at March first. We, we went back to the tag system, and it was January twenty second, I believe, when it was put in effect, but I took out the first week of January and just utilized our four weeks from the start of February till the end.
So, so we're basing our, our, our garbage consumption based on one, on four weeks, so they're fifty two? That's what our, our whole report's based on, then?
That's not correct. That's just for our three bag limit. The two thousand twenty one results can be found in the table one.
And the rest of the, the rest of the time we went back and we strictly enforced the two bag limit with tags or the, or the tag, and I'm not going to say two bag limit, we're going to reinforce the tag rule, per se.
Our contractor was to enforce it. The numbers decreased significantly, but I did hear that there is there have been instances where there have been other bags picked up, unfortunately, and again, just having to reiterate to our contractor about the rules here.
Yeah, no, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Ruffalo, I guess my question is, is that we're looking at one month here. Do we have the data for all the months? When the three bags were going on and when the two, when the tag system was, was in place?
This data would be in the file, staff could definitely obtain that, there was no significant in two thousand twenty, the difference was very minute. We, we saw there was less disposal during two thousand twenty than two thousand twenty one.
So there was, so there was less garbage going to disposal in twenty twenty versus twenty twenty one?
That's correct.
But, but there's also a significant number of households increased, so that kind of makes sense, right? More houses, the really the garbage should go up.
In theory, yes.
In theory. I guess, I guess my question is, is that if you're telling me that our average is one bag per week, our current tag system allows for less than two bags per week, why are, why are we wanting to increase the potential to pay for the, for the residents to pay more costs? To landfill, because we can't control it, once we go up to the two bags. When right now we have a little bit better control over it and if we really wanted to, as you stated in your report, we could increase the extra bag, the extra bag tags that you buy, we can increase the price of them to cover the extra, the extra waste that's going. So I'm, I'm just a little bit, I'm a little bit confused why why we would want to open it up to allow for potentially more garbage to go to the waste that we could have to pay for. I don't know that many municipalities or cities around that are trying to increase the amount of garbage it has, it's going to go to landfill, or actually, most, most places are trying to reduce it. So if you're telling me right now that we only, they're only using one bag per week, then why, why the push to go to two?
Yes, Stephen.
So I guess this all gets addressed and kind of what, what residents are doing, this is, this is great, but the option's still there for residents to put out their, their allotment. Again, like I stressed at the start, this is strictly not a functional changes, this is strictly one for one. Once council, if they provide consensus, there's an option in the next part of this report, which would kind of talk about that specifically on how staff has, has included in this proposal to make sure that there is actually reduction in the proposed amount of waste that's heading to landfill.
The follow-up, Reeve? Yes, yes. That doesn't potentially occur until, till twenty twenty five, is that correct? Is that what was being proposed to start?
That's the second part of that option.
Exactly, so, so we're, we're, we're going to go midstream in the, in the part of the year, try to change up how people go with the garbage tag system. And then try and impose rules on the council that, that may, it may not even look like the one that's sitting here right now. I'm more in the favor of we just leave it for it how it is right now for the rest of the year, when the new council comes on in the fall, if they want to make changes for the upcoming year so that we can properly notify residents and it's the start of a new calendar year, I think that's, I think that's on the new council. But I'm more in favor of just leaving the system as it is, I don't think it's broke by any means, it actually, sounds like it might actually be going in the right direction by forcing people to use tags. And if they need extra to come in and buy them, I don't really want to open the township up to, to the potential for additional costs by allowing the additional bags and because, because at the end of the day, we don't have, there's no control, then we've lost all control. You, you have, you have, you have a mechanism right now to recoup some of your funds. Once you go into two bags with no tags, yeah, have no mechanism unless they go over the two bag limit. So I'm, I'm more in favor of just leaving it as it is, if the new council wants to make a change to, to go ahead, I'm definitely not supporting, you know, a potential for a, a large increase in dollars to the, to the taxpayer or the added environmental awareness that we, that we know what we're making here. I don't want to put any more, any more garbage in the landfill than we need to have, we should be seriously pushing for recycling. Not only that, we spend a massive amount of time on garbage tags and the conversation surrounding garbage tags, it's a little bit it's a little bit hard to understand from my point of view.
Anyway, Jeff?
Yeah, thanks, I, I, it's good points, we, we have spent a lot of time on garbage tags, because I think, like, this is a functional change that makes sense to go to it. As to, as to, it, it really does decrease or increases a lot of the, the staff time, it takes away some of that, that contact. Many, many people do not want to go into the, the office to get garbage tags, they're not interested in that, they, they pay the taxes online and they don't need to go in the office. It's a good, it's a good move to get away from this for the vast majority of, of the residents that don't, that don't need it at all, that just put out one to two bags. I agree with the functional change, where, I mean, I put out a garbage bag yesterday and I was, once again, I, and I made sure this one, this thing was full, I double, I actually had a small bag and I put it in the big, the big bag and it was and I said, this is, this has got to be a heavy garbage bag and it was nineteen pounds. One big garbage, the other part too as well, and, and I think that's like, if you try to actually get thirty three or forty pounds into a garbage bag, that would be, that'd be quite a feat because it's, it's quite a lot of weight to get in there. And I think it's, 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 it's a good change to move towards the, the the idea of doing the, the large item pickup because we can, we can revolve into the right system into doing that with the, with the proper tagging system for it. It, it, it just moves us, it moves us forward and it moves us in a way that makes sense, I think, for most residents for, for this and it doesn't change anything, it doesn't increase the garbage bags, I understand where the council straight is coming from. But I mean, there's also the other side where I mean, the control factors at the window because the, the amount of orange tags that are, that are out there, I mean, I've heard about people, you know, selling them on Facebook or selling it at other places too as well, because they have the abundance of them, there, there's so many that, that there could be out there. But people are, once again, are not using them because I think, once again, there's a responsibility level of the residents of garbage, we're seeing the reduction because of people's ability to and want to recycle to reduce their own garbage, there's, there's a pretty big desire for it. We're always going to have that population that, that, that will fight that change as far as the reduction, but the majority have a, have a true desire to do that. So I think that's why it's a good functional change, I think it's a good move. And it, and it does set us up properly for the future and get us away from sort of the, the old way of doing it and, and, and moving forward. So I, I'm for this, before, before, this even makes more sense now with the data that's been shown. So thanks, Stephen, for that and I hope that's cleared it up for the rest of council too as well, to see that, to see that positive, so, but thank you.
Claus?
Thanks, Reeve, Steve, thanks very much for the report, again, it was always very good, very detailed. I think your recommendation to me is good because it forces people to compact things, probably recycle more. So plus the other thing, I think, by going to this new system, you're probably going to find as less garbage being thrown out along the road. And for you to go have to pick up or clean, somebody to clean up, so I agree with the new system.
Okay, Karen?
So I don't mind the two bag. But I mean, I'm, I'm a little leery on the information that's limited to the four weeks in February. Because I know personally, I didn't start purging until the spring months came and that's when my garbage increase occurred, so I'm not sure how comparing a whole year's worth to a, a, a four week in February was going to compare. I'm not sure about the garbage to the side of the roads because a lot of it is like your tires and things like that as well that people can't get rid of. So going to two bags is not a concern that I have because you get tags now. My concern is the second step. And when we hit that part, we'll go through again what my concerns go to with reference to those tags. I know firsthand that there are several properties in Montague Township that have large land and they burn garbage and so they may have lots of tags. But there are also people who did do their duty in conserving, they have done their other recycling and they do have surplus tags. So that's where I'm going to get into my conversation is part two.
Okay, now I don't see any other, yeah, scene.
Yeah, thank you very much, I guess for myself, I'd like to see all the data. I'd like to see every single month and then I could make a decision because it wasn't, it was only a year ago, we had a report that showed that there was an increase to going to, of cost of going to two bags. Now we have a report that shows there's a decrease in, 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 in costs, it's, it's I don't, I don't quite understand how that, how that functions quite quickly, that quickly, but I would really like to see what the, what the numbers are. You know, and you know, this is, it almost seems like there's a yeah. I, that's all, I'd like to see all the, the true, the true data.
Well, I think the data that we have so far is true, I think what you're saying is you want to see more data.
It's limited, yeah.
It is.
Because the data we have is true. Back to you, Stephen.
Yeah, I guess I'll address my comment there in part two, as for the preused reports there, we can, if council gives consensus, we'll move on to that part.
So do, well, we, we have to look at the second section before we vote on this anyways, don't we? So I don't see any other further questions, so can we just move ahead to the next section then?
Yeah, absolutely, thanks. Reeve Dobson. So we're moving on to kind of the waste diversion options here, so looking at trying to reduce the amount of garbage and waste that's actually hitting the landfill. As noted, the Waste Diversion Act, it was passed to promote reduction and reuse and recycling of waste. So there's a couple of options that staff has noted here. So, so the one is kind of reducing the weight requirements, so as per Council of Straits note, previously in the report, there was noted that at forty pounds, the existing bylaw and a hundred and four extra tags per year would allow, would cost the township a little bit more money if each resident did have full forty pounds per garbage bag, so what staff is suggesting is following suit of every, of many other municipalities throughout and reducing the bylaw as a maximum allowable weight to fifteen kilograms or thirty three pounds. As noted in the table below, i- if council wants to move forward with this situation, there, there would actually be a decrease in the amount of waste that would be hitting the landfill. So when you compare forty pounds at ninety stickers, it ends up with thirty six hundred pounds and then a hundred and four, thirty three pounds comes out slightly under at thirty four, thirty two. So this is actually a reduction in the amount of waste that's hitting the landfill by Montague Township. The next option would be something that council can, could pass a symbolic commitment by twenty twenty five to, to decrease to one bag, which would be again showing their commitment to the future council on moving to reduce, reducing the amount of waste I'm going to use producing. And that's, that's about it, that's in this, the big pros are definitely that we are committed to, you know, the green and being proactive with with these methods. And if there's anything else that council has on this, this stage of the report, I am more than happy to answer.
Any questions in on this? And have Karen?
So where is it, we're discussing the elimination of the orange tag and having no use of them moving forward?
Yes, Stephen.
So this, this would be in twenty twenty two, there would be no longer any additional orange tags issued. Council could state they would like to end all orange tag use there, they could state that they would like to honor throughout. It's definitely up to council on how they'd like to move forward with the existing surplus of tags that are still out there. It, it won't affect large item as they are totally different sticker colors, so there'd be no issues there, it would just come to council decision on the, how they'd like to use these.
Yes, Karen?
So for twenty twenty two, we've already stated to our residents that tags are available for pickup.
That's right, sorry, twenty twenty three is when it would be.
Thank you. And then again, so then council has to make the decision about the current tags that residents have and how they wish to handle them and moving forward as to whether they allow them to use them till they're finished or whether they then in turn say they become null and void.
That would be it, yes.
No more questions, Karen?
Nope.
Okay. Ian?
Yeah, thank you very much, Reeve, first of all, I'd, I'd just like to quickly, quickly apologize to Mr. Ruffalo, I don't want to intend that the data isn't true, I'd just like to see all the data. So I'd like to, I'd like to apologize for that, I'm not, I know it's anybody, but the data is, is not, is not accurate by any means, so, so my apologies for that, Mr. Ruffalo. If you did have a moment, I would really like to see the, the data per month. That'd be interesting, anyway, thank you very much.
Okay, so seeing no further questions here. I have a motion then, it was moved by is, nothing else then before we read the motion, Stephen?
Nothing further for me.
Okay. Thank you, then we have a motion, it was moved by Jeff Carroll and seconded by Ian Straight that the committee, the whole receive the following report, garbage tag review report and that the following be recommended to council. That council adopt the recommended options for the garbage tag system and that staff be directed to develop an amended bylaw twenty two fifty eight dash ninety five to reflect the above noted waste disposal changes and that the amended bylaw be placed on an upcoming council meeting agenda for approval and that council direct staff to bring forward a resolution to encourage the council of twenty two to twenty six to support moving to one bag in two thousand and twenty five. All in favor?
I had my hand up though, I was looking for a recorded vote on this because
Okay.
You were reading.
Sorry, I missed your hand there, Karen, so we will go to a recorded vote on this.
Yeah. Give me a brief second here. My minutes thing went.
So the recommendation also does not have that date of January twenty twenty three on here?
So I believe it's, it's encompassed in the, in like the text of the report.
It says twenty twenty two to twenty twenty six and then it makes reference, so that's why I'm asking for specifics because the orange tags are still being
So the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty six references the new council for the, the new motion. So I can note in the minutes that the intent of this is to take place in twenty twenty three.
Okay.
I'm having a hard time with my alphabet right now. Sorry.
And then also that it's clear that in the option one is that the tags then in turn have no value, is that not correct? And that's that the residents in turn lose the orange tags that they currently have as of January first, twenty twenty three and would, would have to purchase additional tags at the township if they exceed the second bag. So it's not, just so it's clear. Because I don't think that's clear in the report.
With consensus from council, what we can do is just make a commitment, if this is okay with you, Steve, to bring forward information about what we're going to do with the current tags, does that work?
For the next the next meeting, for the next council meeting, Jasmine?
Well, ultimately, I, I don't think it would be the next meeting, it can be a future meeting.
But why wouldn't they be tied together when you're voting on it? Why shouldn't it be fully detailed in it? It's all relevant. Why shouldn't it be fully detailed in it? It's all relevant.
Well, before we, before we move on, um. Uh, your. The request is that we get a consensus to bring this report back later. So. I'll put it on the, uh, I'll put it on the, uh, uh, bring it forward. And we can, uh, we'll see if we have consensus or not. If not, then we're back to square one.
So I, I unfortunately, we do actually have a motion on the floor.
Yep. All right. So we do have a motion, um. And I've already read it. So I'm going to go ask the vote. All in favor.
Hey, I know it's a, it's a recorded vote. I was just preparing during that period. Um, so, uh, we have Reeve Dobson.
Uh, yes, I do.
Counselor Carroll. Counselor Jennings.
Nay.
Counselor Straight.
Nay.
Counselor Van, or Deputy Reeve Vandemere.
Yes.
The motion is carried.
Okay. Thank you for that one. Moving on. Uh, the next one is yours also, Stephen, and that's on the speeding complaint policy.
Thank you, Reeve. Uh, yeah, so Sav has brought forward a report for a potential, um, speeding complaint policy. Um, staff has a draft or attached a draft format of this. Um, and, and it's basically been completed by staff to make sure that we, uh. Have a procedure to follow, um, when it comes to handling these complaints. Uh, we've had a high volume of complaints lately pertaining to, uh, speeding. And staff has been, uh, um, directing them to complete a delegation to council. And then from there on, count, uh, staff would complete reports. Um, there is some similarities between what staff is currently doing in the reports and what. This policy is outlining, um, I, I believe it kind of. Makes it a little more, um, clear on what is required for a speeding complaint and the steps to. Um, be followed to make sure all complaints are being followed up on. And, uh, that all data is being taken into account for these, uh, changes. All in all, that, that's basically the, the sum of the report is, it's, uh, going to utilize our traffic radar. Um, using the eighty-fifth percentile. Um, in our last report, I noted about these percentiles, um. And it's basically putting that up for five days on the complaints and then there's always a. Um, communication between the police services board and staff and then as well with the O B P prior to, uh, these reports being processed. Um, as stated. Um, the draft is attached and staff would like to, um, forward this on to police services board. Um, so they do have their input as well. Just to make sure everybody is on the same page with this policy.
Thank you, Stephen. I'm glad that you are, uh, bringing that forward, uh, and asking us to send it to the police services board. Um, I will, uh, pass on, uh, the information to everybody here that, uh. Um, we had a, um. Police service, uh, they, a police service board, uh. Meeting for all of the municipalities in Lanark County this past week. And this whole issue of speeding was again, the biggest issue that was talked about. And there's, um, other deterrent machinery that is being looked at that may be coming into the, uh, county that. Could be cost shared or utilized or tra- uh, used by different municipalities also. So there's. There's a lot of information going to be coming back in the very soon future. Regarding, uh, the whole speeding issue. And I will also say that, uh, the, um, new chair of the, uh, Lanark County Police Service Board. Uh, this is not a county board. It's just a board, a police service board representing the different municipalities. The new chair is a resident of Montague, Ross McMurci. So, uh, he also is bringing forward. Some in speeding information at the next zone two meeting. So. Whether it be at the zone two or whether it be at. The le- the county level or our own police, police services forum. Speeding is still the biggest issue that we've talked about. And I'll still go back and, and, and this, this, I'm glad, I'm very glad that we're dealing with it also because. I'll still go back to the last election, which is now three years ago. Uh, some of us reported that the biggest, the, the most talked about issue was speeding and it didn't matter whether it was on a gravel road. A paved road, a provincial road, a county road or a municipal road. So it's a big, big issue, but we're definitely dealing with it at the Montague Police Service Board and we're also dealing with it at the county. So. I'm really happy that our council and staff is dealing with this now and I'm very happy that you're sending it back to the police service board for input for the. For a future meeting, Stephen. So thank you for that. And, um, do we have any questions on this? Uh, if not, then, uh, yes, uh, Claus.
Yes, thank you, Reeve. Uh, again, Steve, thank you very much for the report. Uh, do you have any idea maybe in your report? What areas seem to be the most affected? Is there a certain area in the township that's, these complaints are coming from?
I would, that'd be Reeve Vandemere. I definitely wouldn't say there's a specific area. The past four we've had have seemed to be. In all four quadrants of the municipality. Um, it, it's kind of. Throughout the municipality, I would say is kind of a common theme. Some residents feel there is a speeding issue and some residents say there's absolutely no speeding issue. So. That in the report, it kind of speaks the perception of, uh, speed and I think that's a big factor in this, but no said rode.
Okay. I know that, uh, I've had people mention to me that since we paved. Or repaved and improved, uh, Roseville roads, north and south. That increased speeding happens there an awful lot. Just kind of unfortunately improve the roads and then we get a speeding problem. Thank you.
Okay, uh, then, uh, thank you then for that. Uh, we have a motion moved by Karen Jennings, second by Claus Vandemere, that the committee of the whole receive the. Public Works Manager, uh, reports and, uh. And we receive the following report by the, uh, Public Works Manager and that the following be recommended to council. That council adopt the draft speeding complaint policy addressing speeding complaints on. Township roads in principle. And that the council direct staff to send this draft speeding complaint policy to the police services board for input. So just to be clear then, Steve, uh, we're going to send this to the police services board. And it'll wait to come back to a council meeting until you hear from the, uh, police services board. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So it doesn't necessarily have to be the next meeting then. Okay, thank you. All, uh, any questions? All in favor? Okay, that's Carrie. Thanks, Steve. Moving on, uh, to three C. Uh, the part eight septic inspections.
Thank you very much, Reeve Dobson, um. Before Steve leaves for the meeting, um, it, would it be appropriate to see if there's any questions, uh, about his fourth quarter report? Uh, if council wants to, um, just as a. So he doesn't have to stay for the whole thing?
Okay, so if we don't have any opposition to, uh, changing the, uh, the schedule of, on the agenda. Um, I don't see any, if you have any opposition to it, just put your hand up, please. But otherwise. I think that's a very good idea so that we don't hold Steve all night. So, uh, then, um, what we're going to do then is we're going to move to, uh. Uh, three I. For the fourth quarter report. Do, does anyone have any questions to Steve for that? So seeing none, uh, Steve, I think we're going to let you off light. And, uh, we'll be voting on this, the fourth quarter report a little later in the agenda. Thank you, Steve. Back to you, Jasmine.
Thank you very much. So this, uh, report is to inform council that the, um. Lanark Leeds Grenville, uh, health unit has informed. Their, um, their townships that they are no longer going to be offering, uh, what's called the part eight septic inspections. On behalf of their municipalities. So, um, mo- the vast majority of municipalities in our health unit use, use them. To provide their septic permitting and inspection process. Um, the township of Tay Valley does use, uh, the Rita Valley Conservation Authority to provide that service. Um, so this, uh, report is really just to inform council, um. They, I, it is to let you guys know that you will in the near future, um, have to have conversations about how you would want this service to be provided. Um, the Rita Valley Conservation does offer the service, um, the participating municipalities, um. Certainly note that the Rita, um, Valley Conservation Authority provides excellent service on this. Um, additionally, you can look at, um, potentially partnering with a municipality. To provide this service for a larger jurisdiction. Uh, we certainly don't have enough permits coming into our office to maintain it in. A new, um, position, uh, and the, um. The requirements for passing those types of exams are quite, uh. Um. Strenuous. So I know there is a, um, discussion with the township of Drum, Drummond, North Elmsley about potentially. Hiring their own. I know that they're going to be discussing that at an upcoming meeting as well. So. This is an F Y I.
Okay, uh, just to, uh, I'm going to go to, I've got clause in the name, but, uh, just mention a couple of things first, um. I did have a, um. Uh, health unit meeting. Uh, just before this meeting tonight, so at four o'clock this afternoon. And, um. I, I didn't realize it until we met that they told us that they've already met with. Um, almost all of the municipalities. I think they deal with nineteen different municipalities. I believe they've dealt with, uh, they've met with. Um. All of the, uh, municipalities already, if not all, most. And, uh, to, uh, to bring that information to them. About a couple of things, uh, the phase in period. Um, won't start till September, uh, twenty twenty-two. And they've also assured us that they would be staying on for one more year. Uh, to give any help in the, in the transition period. So that was good. But there was a little bit of a pushback tonight in our meeting because. When we first talked about it, my impression was that. When, uh, they. Brought this to the, uh, municipal level. It would be brought to one of the meetings where you had the staff and politicians sitting together in the meeting, but that didn't happen that way. Um, there's discussion. Uh. There's because of, because of that pushback, there's now going to be a much more important, um. Emphasis put on the health unit. Uh, reporting and, and can, reporting and consulting and discussing and so on. With municipalities, with the, uh, with politicians involved. So, uh, they sort of jumped the gun there a little bit, I think, but, uh, it's going to be reversed and I think it'll be, it'll be good. Most of us at the board believe that, uh, s- s- something has to be done. But, uh, but it's still open for discussion as far as I'm concerned. That's just a little bit of a, of a update. Um, so I'm going to go to Claus first and then to you, Ian.
Thank you, Reeve. Uh, Jasmine, Rita Valley Conservation Authority, I know they've offered to do this, this come up at county council also. Uh, are they charging for this service?
Yes, yes, they do have charges for the service, yes. Uh, but it is typically treated as a user pay.
Right. Yeah, no, I knew that. Um. We don't know what that charge would be though.
Not offhand, but certainly any follow-up meetings that you'd have to consider your different options, you would, you'd have all of that information.
Okay. I'm wondering about exploring, you said with Drummond North Elmsley, we're thinking of hiring their own, of sharing with other municipalities. Of having a contract person doing this. I think we might have a little bit more control that way. Thank you.
So re- revert, regarding the costing, uh, clause, uh, that was an issue that was brought up this afternoon also. And, um. The health unit will be bringing forward, uh, get some information to us, which will be forwarding on to all municipalities. Uh, regarding the costs of the, what the, what the overall costs have been in the past. So we can have some, so we can have some comparisons.
That would be good. Thank you.
Yep, Ian?
Yeah, thank you very much. Thank you very much, Reeve, for the update from the county and, uh, thank you, Mr. Ralph, for the report. I guess my question is, is Mr. Ralph, could this be brought up to your monthly clerks conference that you have meeting? There's buy-in with the, with the, a larger number of municipalities to share costing?
Uh, it was brought up at the C A O's meeting that we did have last week. And, uh, I think, uh, from the, and I don't want to commit any municipality to anything because of course it is C A O's and not council. Um, but I think all of the municipalities are interested in, in exploring different options. And that could include different partnerships as well.
Yeah, that would be, I think that, you know, for myself, I'd definitely be more in favor of going down that route than I think that it would with the cost base authority. Um, I, I kind of agree with, uh, Deputy Reeve Vandemere and the fact that I think there's a. Better potential to control the costs, um, that are associated, uh, associated with this. Um, to ensure that, uh, we have a, a good service and, uh, you know, that it, the, the cost don't, uh, balloon out of. Thank you very much.
I think the other good thing about this, uh, a- at, at first I looked at this as a, uh, sort of a downloading situation. But, uh, but the more we get into the discussions and the more I look at all sides of it. The more I think that this is going to be an opportunity. Uh, for us to simp, to, to have the, uh. The whole system, uh, s- uh, simplify a little bit more. And so I do think that the whole system, there is an opportunity now to make it a lot, a little bit more efficient. Which is, which addresses some of the issues that we've had in the past, whether it be, uh, perseverance or planning or whatever. So I, I do, I'm, I'm trying to look on the positive side here and I do think that with time and consultation and, uh. And discussion that we can come up with a better, a better model or better solution. So Ian, did you have another comment there?
No, actually, I think, I think I'm all ready to disperse and say, really, thank you very much.
Okay, anything else on this? Okay, thanks, Jasmine. Uh, have a motion and move by Ian Straight, second to Claus Vandemere, that the, we, the whole receive. The part eight septic inspections, uh, report. And that the following be recommended to council. Uh, that we receive this for information. All in favor? Thank you. And just by the way, uh, I'll be attending another meeting, uh, Friday, um, regarding. Uh, many issues, but this is being one of them that it'll be talked about. This is the Friday, the Friday morning meeting that happens with the health unit for all heads. Council in Leeds, Grenville and Lanark. And, uh. At those meetings, usually there's some of the member, the member of parliaments, um. A- at those meetings also and it, and it, and it's, it, it's, they're not public meetings, but they're, uh. There's certainly a chance that we, uh, that we can ask the, um. Um, the public, uh, Dr. Paul Stewart questions regarding not just this, but other things also. So. That's going to be brought up, uh. Uh, on Friday. And I know for a fact that the way we were talking about today, that everybody will, is going to be much more informed about this because, uh. Jasmine, if you're talking, you're muted and I heard you say something, Claus, but it, all I heard was Jasmine.
Yeah, we, yeah, where you were having some technical issues.
Who was?
You were.
I was?
Yeah, oh, you're good, you're good now.
Okay, so is everything okay with the last one then? Okay, then we're going to move on to D. Uh, that's, uh, the. Okay, then we're going to move on to D. Uh that's the Andrew, is Andrew with us here? That's the surplus to reserves?
Andrew is not here with us.
Start report?
Yes.
Are you giving us that report? Okay, over to you then, Jasmine.
Uh yes, so this is a very routine um report. It's a routine motion to just ensure that we don't kind of lose our surplus. So um uh it's a motion to pass a surplus into reserves and council can, in your twenty twenty two budget process, allocate uh those reserves further as to where exactly you want them to go.
Okay, I do have a motion is moved by Karen Jennings, second by Jeff Carroll, and that the committee of the whole received the following report, the twenty twenty two surplus to reserves report. And that the following be recommended to council, that council authorized staff to transfer any surplus from township operations for twenty twenty one to the capital reserves. And that council authorized staff to transfer any surplus from water sewer operations for twenty twenty one to a water sewer operating reserve. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Uh then moving on, uh we have um we have all of the uh fourth quarter reports together here. And um I will just, they are in in line and the fourth quarter overtime, water report, sta- uh the water operators stats, the MLEO fourth quarter report, the Pub Works fourth quarter report, CBO fourth fourth quarter, and the Planning Services fourth quarter. Now, we've touched on the one already, uh the Public Works one. So uh and the motion that I have covers all of them, but we'll go through them. And uh if there's any questions for any of them or comments, open it up to council. Okay, seeing none, um then this motion, yes, Karen?
Uh is Miles around for a question?
No, Miles did not attend the meeting, no.
Okay, I'll just shoot him an email. I I mean, I'm very pleased that our calls were down, just inquiring on the training. And then on the MLEO one, uh just following it, it said zero on our property standards inquiries?
Yeah.
Um just following up regarding an email we'd received?
Um, well, we we can't really talk about any specific uh
No, that's why I wondered, because it said zero, that was all.
Okay, I will follow up.
Okay.
Any other questions on any of them? All right, I do a motion moved by Claus Vandemere, second by Ian Straight, that the fault, that the committee of the whole received the following report, that being overtime, water report, water operator stats, MLEO report, Public Works, CBO and Planning Services. And that the following be recommended to council, that council receive the above noted reports for information. All in favor? Okay. Thank you. No, that's that, and everybody's hand went up together. Here, everybody. Uh then uh before we uh adjourn this meeting, do we have any uh questions from the public?
Uh hi, Reeve Dobson, it's Christine. Uh we do have a couple of questions. Just bear with me here. Uh they're all related to um the garbage tag discussion. So the first one says, um if the two bag no tag option is passed, will there be a reduction in our taxes as the orange tags have been a service that was paid for in our taxes?
Anybody want to attempt to answer that question?
So I think generally the answer would be no. Um but we still will pay for the difference, there's going to be no difference in what we pay for in garbage collection in terms of tags or no tags.
Okay, and the next question, Christie?
Uh it says, if there is going to be a charge of three dollars for the third garbage bag, can we use three of the orange tags until they are used up? Uh township has already received, or township has already gotten the revenue for those tags through our taxes. And no, I don't have n- nine hundred tags.
So I think we'll provide further clarity on exactly what will happen to the previous tags uh in the future. So I I think that'll answer the question.
Okay, and then the last question I have is
Thanks, Jasmine.
Oh, sorry. Um the last question I have is, can uh we bring in the orange tags that we do have left over to exchange them for the three dollar new tags?
I think it's the same answer.
Yeah.
Okay, and that's all the questions that I have.
So Jasmine, you yeah, so Jasmine, you 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 get those questions anyway, so we can keep them on file, right?
Yes.
So that we can answer those questions a little bit more clearly when they, when they get clarified.
Yes.
Okay, uh I see Jeff, yes, Jeff?
I I I mean, I I it's a great question. I love that. I love the 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 points. I I think one thing that I I like to, like, it always is in my head is that we budget garbage on a yearly basis. It's a yearly garbage allotment. The tags are allotted for that. There was, I mean, we don't change the color of the tags, and that means they can be used year over year. But I think there's there, we we need to make sure that there's an understanding that it's not a, like a, like a, the money you receive and then and then and that all goes toward time and we're saving it from garbage. It's it's budgeted on a yearly basis, and those tags are, you know, are are part of that budget process. And that's my understanding, that's my feeling of it. Uh but we, I mean, the 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 rollover makes it convenient for for people too as well, especially if they use a little bit less and they want to use a little bit more the following year. I think that was the idea. Um but I that we caution that, though, because if, I mean, obviously, if there was a huge trade-in of everybody trading in their their orange garbage tags, uh we don't know what that potential could be. And once again, in my thoughts, it can be, it could be hundreds of thousands of dollars of 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 a turnaround, in theory. Uh so I mean, like, it it, I mean, we, that's why I think there's a, there's a I think that's got to be a strong understanding of of how we budget and how a budget is done, and it's on a yearly basis. And I think that's a a a big point, we and we 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 close the door of that of that year and that amount spent for garbage, that's, we closed it for the the previous year and we opened it up for the new year. So I hope that is under, like, it's hard to understand it, and I'm obviously hoping for more conversation on it, so. Thanks.
So good, that, th- those are, those are good questions from the public, but um but as Jasmine said, uh those answers will become more clear when we become more clear uh and to give it, to give them the answers. But I don't want to get into a great big discussion about the question, so uh I I don't think this is the right place to, but uh Karen, if you have a comment specific to do with the question just asked, or maybe something that will help to clarify that question, please do.
It was to clarify with Jeff, like, he had one interpretation of the budget on the garbage, and I have a different one because I look at as if I was the taxpayer and I was actually saving, then there's a difference. So if Jeff was giving his view, I was just going to give a different view as well.
Yeah, and I I should have um, I should have uh like, uh I I really should, we should really stop talking about that right away because it, we were just trying to answer the question. And the answer to the question is that we don't, we, it's not a hundred percent clear right now. And um and I I'm, you know, I I I think we probably, we probably all discussed it around the table a a a little while ago in our, in our meeting, so that it's pretty clear on how everybody feels about it. But uh to be fair to you, uh to be fair to you, Karen, I will allow you this because I did allow it to Jeff, so thanks.
So I've also asked um Steve if he could give me some data with reference and then eliminated the garbage tags and what the timeframe was allowing the residents to continue to use the existing supply before just saying no value. Um we are aware of current place and how they put theirs in place, and I did ask him then if he would do others, just so that you guys are aware.
Yeah, thank you. And uh that was a question that you, that's what you did bring up, and he will be doing that. And I think the questions that the public will have and will continue to have, we'll ha- we'll clarify them up after every meetings as much as we can, so it's the best that we can do. So thank you. Are there any other questions? Okay, uh thank you then, everyone. Um I have a motion was moved by Jeff Carroll and second by Karen Jennings that the committee of the whole meeting do now adjourn at eight oh one PM, uh Carrie, uh all in favor? And that is Carrie. And thank you, and uh we just, we're going to go straight into our next meeting. Uh continue our our uh reconvene our council meeting. I just want to set the paperwork out of the road, the other one up. I do have a motion here by uh Karen Jennings and second by Jeff Carroll, that this council meeting do reconvene at eight oh two. All in favor? All in favor? Yep, thanks. It seems to me, Jasmine, that there might be a slight uh uh maybe a, there's a little bit of a time lapse because here I, that I haven't noticed before. So when I ask all in favor, there's usually nothing for about uh three, two seconds maybe, and then everybody's hand goes up. That doesn't normally happen, so I'm not sure if it's Mike, what's going on here at this end or what.
I think you may be having some connection issues because you're, you're also really slow. Like, as in your, your, your video feed is slow, not you as a human being.
Yeah, no, I tried not to be on the basketball, anyways. Okay, so um then I also have a motion, it was moved by Ian Straight and seconded by Claus. Oh, no, sorry, I should go back to the that that uh this was moved by Ian Straight and seconded by Claus Vandemere, that this council moves closed session at eight oh three. As per S two thirty nine Municipal Act, uh zero two thousand and one C twenty five, in order to address two items. Item one, personal matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees, more specifically clerk administrator acting appointment. And item two, personal matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees, more specifically confidential addendum to planning services report. All in favor? Uh, yep, all in favor?